At this time, I'd like to introduce Bob Edmonds from the Ambrose Rivers Post 328, Main Street, Archibald, retired commander of the U.S. Navy. Served 21 years as supply corps as a logistic officer, three tours of duty at sea, and multiple decorations. Service Medal, Navy Commendation Medal, and the Navy Achievement Medal. Currently serves as commander of Post 325 in Archibald. Thank you, sir, for your service. The floor is yours. And we also invite all the students who I know do the pledge every day to help do the Pledge of Allegiance. Are we all ready?
Put a nice hand for all the students. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have a moment of silence. We're gonna have a moment of silence for Deputy U.S. Marshal Christopher David Hill. Married father of two, an Army veteran who served in Afghanistan, was part of a fugitive task force, was fired upon while executing a warrant for the arrest of Sheila Lynette Towles Pierce. Wanted in Harrisburg, PA. Police sense suspicion of illegal possession of firearms and simple assault and making terroristic threats and offense according to the U.S. Marshal. Also, Deputy Sheriff Daniel McCartney was shot and killed responding to a burglary in Tacoma, Washington. Deputy McCarthy was first officer on the scene, became engaged in a foot pursuit of at least one subject. The man opened fire on Deputy McCarthy during the pursuit and mortally wounded Deputy McCartney and transported him. They was transported to St. Joseph's Medical Center where he passed away approximately 2:00 AM. Please keep both of these heroes in your thoughts and prayers. Also, keeping your thoughts and prayers to students at Benton, Kentucky Marshall County High School where two students, Bailey Holt and Preston Coop, were killed and 16 injured by a gunman. Please keep all of our people, our citizens, in your thoughts and prayers and their families while they go through a very, very trying time. Thank you.[146.26][146.26](APPLAUSE). I'd like to bring this Wednesday, January 24th Board of Commissioners meeting to order in the Commissioners' Conference Room, 10:00 AM. I'd like to do the reading of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call?
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, I'd like to introduce the new Executive Board of Lackawanna County Government.[182.23][182.23](APPLAUSE). All the students at Prescott, the Prescott students from the elementary school are here today, and we have great things to talk about. This time, I'd like to bring Al O'Donnell up to the podium and Kathleen and Mari, if they're here, to say a few words about the students. You know, our students are the backbone of our community. They're the next generation, and they're gonna take over, and they're gonna make our community great. So I'd like to thank all of you for what you've achieved so far. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of Prescott Elementary School, we are delighted and thrilled to be here, and I assume this is the most highly anticipated meeting of the year and the most attended meeting of the year.
Absolutely.
With all our students. Just a little background, Ms. Cad and Ms. Garrigo, who are hiding behind me and don't want any of the limelight, they're responsible for this.
We're gonna bring them up, don't worry.
Yes, because our feeling is we, our students receive a lot from the community, but part of teaching students about the future is giving back to the community. And Ms. Cad and Ms. Garrigo were instrumental in starting, number one, a drive for the veteran homeless people of Lackawanna County through Monsignor Kelly and the St. Francis of Assisi Soup Kitchen, and they made blankets as a Veterans Day project. And then at Christmas, they coordinated a sock drive, which we will presenting to Monsignor Kelly next week for the homeless veterans. It's not only that they come to school and we received a lot of things, but we have to teach them about community service. And as you can see from our students, we have students not only from Lackawanna, that start out in Lackawanna County, we have students that have been throughout the world that ended up at William Prescott Elementary School. And in the spring, the third graders are also responsible for another project. It's the Go Me Bag Project, which we donate to Lackawanna children and youth so that when children are taken out of their homes, they have a bag to put their worldly possessions in. And our teachers do a great job. It makes my job a lot easier when I have great teachers like Mrs. Garrigo and Ms. Cad. They're the ones doing the work. I'm just along for the ride. But I wanna publicly thank you guys for inviting us. Our kids are loving being down here. All of them are very at home. Maybe there's a future commissioner.
That's what we're hoping for.
A future U.S. Senator, a future mayor sitting before you. And it's all about, as I tell the children, it's about giving back to the community. We receive a lot from the community, but the whole key in life is to not only receive from the community, but to start volunteerism and become active, positive members of the Lackawanna County community. So thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Al. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, it's great to have all you kids here. Welcome, and I look forward to watching what you do and your future endeavors, and I hope you have a great day, and we're honored to have you here.
Commissioner Niteriani? You all have very, very a lot to be proud of for what you, all you students did. This is a great thing to do to help people. You've got great teachers, great principal, a good school district. Keep up the good work, and Principal O'Donnell missed it in saying, maybe we have a future president here. Who knows? Hopefully, that'll be the case. Stay in school, work hard, take care of each other, and take care of people, and thank you very much.
That's great. It is. It's about giving back, and it's about caring about each other. You know, life isn't easy, and some children might come from a household where it's a tougher household for them, and so they come to school, and school sometimes is a sanctuary, somewhere for them to enjoy that seven hours a day where there's no issues, and there's a good breakfast, and there's a lunch. You know, they're the kids that you really wanna make sure you're good friends with them, because they're the ones that need friends, and they need people to care for them. So you have that option in school. I'm sure you have someone you know that might have that situation. So you make sure, maybe you put your arm around them, or you shake their hand or whatever, and you be nice to them, because they really need that. And I'd just like to thank you for everything that you're doing right now. I mean, our veterans are the reason why we're able to sit here and have a meeting. If we didn't have those people that are our servicemen and women to go on and fight behalf of the United States of America, we wouldn't have a country. So making blankets for them and keeping them warm really matters, because they're our heroes. So I'd just like to thank you for everything you do, and this is a great age to start. You know, your whole life, you're gonna have options to give back, or be involved, or do a little bit of something. Always help out. Be part of the solution, and I believe that every one of you in this room can be part of the solution. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.[503.81][503.81](APPLAUSE). And it's cool to, you know, get the morning off right, isn't it? It's kinda fun to come down here with us. We have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize William Prescott Elementary School, third grade students, in honor of achieving a designation of a group providing great works in Lackawanna County given the 24th day of January 2018 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Niteriani, and Commissioner Lorraine A. Cummings, on behalf of 214,000 citizens, your day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations, guys.[543.16][543.16](APPLAUSE). Now, this is gonna be the interesting part. That's Fran Piantusso. She's gonna take a picture of all of you with this certificate in front of you. So Fran?
And the commissioners.
And the commissioners, so, and Mr. O'Donnell, and the two teachers. But I'm sorry, last, absolutely not least, thank you to the teachers, because, you know, there's teachers in your life you never forget, and there's three in my mind that I think about all the time, and the impact is immense. So thank you for everything you do, and Al, thank you for leading that school, and you've done a great job for a long time. Thank you.
Jobs made easier when you have great teachers like this.
Absolutely. Takes a team.
Everybody has run gather around the pictures. Hi, all of them are lying here. Some of them back up here with their missionaries. If anybody wants to jump up there with the missionaries, everybody.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, guys, I'm not in this picture. Hold on.
You guys, what you wanna do is, we're gonna push the chairs, and it's a lot, and stand up. We need a lot more up. Yeah, stand up, stand up. Everybody stand up. We're gonna move the chair back. You guys in the front.
How are you, honey?
That's my Justin.
And then we'll put everybody sitting at the.
Yeah, Al, you sit down at the table.
Okay.
We have a whole box.
What's up?
We have a whole box.
Yeah.
At least.
It was last year from the three of them.
And you wanna shut off your lights?
Oh!
Dorothy!
Wrong light?
Yeah.
Where's Fran?
James, sit right there.
There you go.
Yeah, he's tall.
Okay, where's my TV? My TV's in there, too?
Yep.
Stop.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Can you see these? Fran, can you see them?
Spencer, CJ, right up here.
I'm down. Look at you, I'm down.
All right, we're gonna take a few. Everybody looking at me.
This young guy, hang on.
Everybody looking at me and smiling. Some little ones up there, you wanna bring them up?
Yeah, he needs to come up.
Go up by Peter Walls.
He's hiding.
Go right in front of Peter Walls.
We're on the corner, right there. Right on the corner. Here we go, everybody looking at me. Ready? Smile. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Two more. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Perfecto.
Boys and girls, what do you say?
What do you say?
Thank you!
Thank you.
Oh, you got t-shirts.
Thank you.
Jack, everything good?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner, thank you.
No problem, boss.
And we got them in and out quick.
Bye, guys.
See you. Angelo, are you okay?
How did you handle getting them all up in the elevator?
I know.
They have a job getting them in town there, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you. See you Sunday.
Thanks, Ollie. Nice and quick.
Close to Sunday, Parker.
Yes, yes, I got Frankie Burke was in the building yesterday. We went through the whole thing. Buddies for Super Bowl Sunday, and then in February, it's gonna be, no, no, it's got the Backyard Ale House, Waldorf, and the first one in.
Yeah, that's a job I would want.
And you got.
That's gotta be so hard getting them all up.
Frankie Burke was telling me that.
We have, we have a whole box, so we'll give them each one. It'll be a little remembrance for them.
What is the shirt?
It's from three-on-three basketball tournament last year. It's nice. We have all kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, boy, you get like that.
Where you want it.
You don't want us to do that, though.
I'm not like O'Donnell.
Hey! I get it. Thank you, Prescott Elementary. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, it is.
Thank you, boys and girls, for those blankets. Gonna keep all those veterans warm. Thank you very much.
There'll be more next year, right?
Thank you.
That's funny.
Just tell them to turn the camera and.
Okay.
Oh, I'm right here, Miss Sherry.
Andy, you ready?
Yeah, he's gonna.
No, 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 you can't do that. No, just go.
You're okay?
No.
Okay, we're good? Okay.
Fran, we ready?
Do you want to?
No, that's okay. No, I'm good, I'm good. Go ahead, yeah. We all end up sick and tired. It's your fault. No, I know. He's here.
Okay, are we back? We're back? Okay.
You ready?
Okay, Andy, you ready to give an announcement? Read you the opportunity.
Johnny coming in? Yeah.
That's a job. All those kids on the ground, they stay.
True.
Oh, I love you in the other.
God help them.
Everyone got a shirt?
Everyone get a shirt.
Fun start.
Radways out there directing. Good job, Jim.
He's doing a good job.
Yes, he's good at them.
Be happy to review with you, but I'd like to call to your attention one invoice on today's list of payables, which after reviewing our office has included for approval, which is for clothing items. This purchase was ordered and delivered to the county. I'm referring to the $1,600, $1,600.20 to Bruseli Advertising for shirts and jackets. It didn't follow the typical procedures, and I'm actually recommending, as a result of that, that the county consider writing a policy for non-contractual clothing purchases that typically would include the county name. For example, there are contractual clothing allowances for various county personnel such as uniforms and clothing for the sheriff's office and prison, just to name two. However, there are, there's no policy for non-contractual clothing expenditures. Since there's been no formal policy, we'd like to have purchases such as this addressed for future authorization and consistency. And if the county does indeed pay for non-contractual clothing, the IRS code for fringe benefits should be followed in a W-2 issued so that the county is not at risk of non-compliance. And we'd be happy to assist the county if they so choose to formulate a policy for this type of expenditure.
Okay, we'll go over it. Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
On the question, Pat?
On the question.
The only reason I'm voting no on this is because there was an expenditure and a check written out for that video that we promoted for the reassessment, so I'm not in favor of that, so I'm voting no on it.
Okay, dokey. 18-0020.
Approving Emergency Management Performance Grant. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County hereby approves and authorizes grant submission by Lockawana County, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management PMA for federal fiscal year 2017-18 in the amount of $38,693.16, and Rich Barboulis, our director, deputy director for emergency management, is here to explain the agreement.
Hey, Rich.
Morning, commissioners. This is our annual submission for this grant. It reimburses for 50% of the emergency management coordinator's salary and benefits to the county.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Barboulis? I'd like to make a motion to approve an emergency management performance grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
18-0022.
Entering into an agreement with Somerville Services. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County, following a competitive procurement process, this hereby enters into a service agreement with Somerville Services, Inc., Security Division, PO Box 476 Westfield, New York, for provisional comprehensive security services at Pennsylvania Career Link at Lockawana County on Franklin Avenue in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And George Kelly is going to explain to us why we're doing this.
Morning, George.
Good morning, commissioners. This is to provide security services at the Career Link Center down on Franklin Street. It's a state building, owned building, that is run by consortium of operators, meaning our workforce development board works out of there, firms that also provide services for displaced workers, for transitional youth, transitional families, and it's required to provide a security service up front because there have been a number of issues over the past, just for the safety of the staff there. So, we did a competitive bid on this, and this is the most competitive.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Somerville Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 18-0023.
Entering into an agreement with Educational Data, Inc. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County hereby enters into a purchase of additional services agreement and awards $80,000 in rapid response funding to educational data systems for individuals meeting eligibility requirements for dislocated workers as defined by Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014. Mr. Kelly?
This is some money that has been voted to us, provided to us by the state to help out-of-work employees or people who are being laid off. We see in the news that there are a number of companies that are downsizing. This is a team that goes in and provides rapid response to determine what their skills are, what training they need to be re-employed in another field or in another business.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kelly? I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems, Inc. Do I have a second?
Second. On the question, what, you know, what jobs are they trained for? Do they choose, or do we?
What there is, there's a one-page list that's provided by the state of high priority occupations, and those are the occupations where there's a definite commitment by employers to hire people in Lockawana County and across the state. So therefore, they can actually go in and work on these high priority occupations for training. Also in addition, there would be jobs in a specific company where the company says, "I need machine fabricators," or "I need somebody to do packaging," whatever it may be. They will actually provide a program or training program specific to that individual that will give them the skills to do the job while they're working there.
Okay, thank you, George. Sorry.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 18-0024.
This for redevelopment assistance capital grant program for Just Believe Recovery Center of Carbondale, Pennsylvania, where's the Lockawana County Drug and Alcohol Addiction Winning With Neighbors Project entails renovations to current buildings, dead detox from rehab rooms, outpatient clinics, certified nurse aides, school replacement of roof for three sites, fire alarm panel equipment, additional of a sprinkler system, updating of an elevator in Carbondale, Pennsylvania, where's Lockawana County is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance programs as a source to finance the project, where's the Just Believe Recovery Center of Carbondale has proposed that the county assists the Just Believe Recovery Center in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, where's the county desires to assist the Just Believe Recovery Center of Carbondale in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Program, where's Lockawana County hereby authorizes, the chairman of Lockawana County Board of Commissioners sign and authorize all documents and accept any rewards relating to the redevelopment assistance grants. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Lockawana County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize to accept an award in the amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Just Believe Recovery Center of Carbondale LLC for the project. And we're very pleased today, commissioners, to have Cindy Bellino, who's the CEO and president of Just Believe Recovery Center from Carbondale. She's going to join George Kelly up at the podium, and she also has one of her associates with her she's going to introduce at the time and tell us a little bit about the project and the impact it has on Lockawana County and how it's going to help us.
Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Cynthia Bellino.
Thanks for coming in.
Well, I appreciate you asking us to be here, and I also want to thank everyone here in this room for your support, because if it wasn't for your support, we wouldn't have gotten this grant, I'm sure. We're very proud and pleased to have received this. As you know, it's a million-dollar grant, matching grant, so we'll be putting in, you know, the match on that and in the future. If anyone has been up, which I believe you have been up to the center, you'll see in the future, there's probably quite a bit more work like that to be done there, which our intentions are to do that. We would like to make the people of Carbondale and our community very proud of what's going on up there in the center, something they can say, "Yes, that's Just Believe Recovery Center, and that's in our hometown." So, as you read, we have a lot of work to do on the building. The million dollars, $2 million goes very quickly on a building that size and that campus. And I would like to introduce Bridget, because she is actually the woman who worked on this grant, and she had 10 days. We handed it to her and says, "Can we get this?"
Good job, Bridget.
And 10 days. And I couldn't be more proud of our staff that we have up there. Bridget is actually our director of the whole entire campus up there. So I'd like to introduce her because she does need to take the award, I would say, for doing this work, because it was really on her shoulders to get it done. Bridget?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. We are definitely so excited to have this opportunity and to be able to move forward to revitalize parts of the building in order to expand our programming, which will in turn create over 70 jobs, most of which are jobs that pay. You know, the next steps coming up, we're looking forward to, I don't want to take all the credit, it was definitely a team effort, and just feeling really blessed and absolutely thank you for working with us and recognizing us.
Congratulations on the million dollars. That really will go a long way for what you've got to do.
Thank you.
Would the board like to say anything?
Questions? Thank you for coming in. Thank you for all your hard work, and as someone who's been pushing more education on the opioid crisis that we're currently in, I appreciate the work that you're doing. So, thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Commissioner Notaryani?
It is a great project. Shortly after we were elected, Chief Wallace and myself and our drug and alcohol director at the time, Bo Holman, took a ride up there and a tour of the place, and it's phenomenal what you've done so far, and you're doing nothing more than better things with it since, and it's a great asset to the community, and keep up the good work, and thank you very much for your hard work and dedication.
Congratulations, because, you know, we need to help people that are dependent. You know, and now every family deals with it. It's not a dirty secret anymore. It's out there, it's in the light, and it's good to have another place that we can turn to when people need help. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. We really do appreciate it.
No problem.
Congrats, Cindy.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for the redevelopment assistance capital program application for Just Believe Recovery Center of Carbondale. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Congratulations. 18-0025.
This is ratifying and approving submission of a Keystone Community Development Grant. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County hereby approves the Provider Professional Service Department of Health and Human Services. No, that's the wrong one. It's not in order here. George, you have to bear with us for a second. We don't have the proper grant in front of us.
Yeah, we don't have it up here at all.
Yeah, it's not here. Yeah. Where's Lockawana County is interested in providing economic development revitalization within Lockawana County, where's Lockawana County supports local efforts focused on job development, infrastructure improvements which promote employment opportunities for residents of the county, where's Lockawana County is sponsoring a grant application, Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through Keystone Communities Development Grant Program on behalf of Creative and Performing Arts of Northeastern Pennsylvania to assist the purchase and installation of energy-efficient heating and air conditioning system in the Ritz Theater 220 to Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $114,750. Now therefore, be it resolved, Lockawana County does hereby authorize submission of the application of Pennsylvania Department of DCD on behalf of the above-named entity and project as detailed. Be it further resolved, Lockawana County hereby authorizes, the chairman of Lockawana County Board of Commissioners, to sign all documents except any awards if approved related to this Keystone Community Development Grant. Mr. Kelly, I apologize for not having it in order. This is what you call job security for Tracy Hart by not being here today. She's making sure that, she's making sure that we need her after all the mistakes I've made today.
I think I paid a $10 to do that, Andy. Teamwork. Commissioners, what this is, is an application to the state. It would be funded by Keystone Communities to help the Ritz Theater, the building itself, update their systems to be able to expand the school and the good work that cap is doing on site at this time. And again, it's not coming out of our general fund, it's not money looking from us, it's where the conduit, and would be passed through when they'd receive the benefit of this project.
Good, George. Does the board have any questions for George? I'd like to make a motion ratifying and approving the submission of Keystone Communities Development Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thank you, George.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, George. 18-0026.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Agreements. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County does hereby approve the Provider and Professional Service Agreements with Department of Human Services, Office of Youth and Family Services with True Core Behavioral, Burke One Dad Imaging Services, and the University of Scranton Family Inter-System Team, and Mr. Bill Browning, our director of County Human Services, here to explain the agreement to us.
The agreement with Burke One is to maintain our adoption files, which have to be stored functionally forever, based on adoption law. The University of Scranton agreement is part of our data initiative to analyze the performance of various programs that we are funding to ensure that we're getting the maximum amount of results from them. And the True Core Behavioral Health Solutions is a facility for dual-diagnosed youth with behavioral health issues and addiction issues.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning? I'd like to make a motion approving OYFS Providers for Professional Agreements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Bill. Opportunity for the public?
There's one final business item on our agenda this morning. It's 18-0028, and it's an appointment to the Lockawana County River Basin Sewer Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County does hereby appoint the following individual to serve at the Lockawana County River Basin Sewer Authority, Mr. Thomas Wascoro from Blakely, Pennsylvania.
Does the board have any questions? I'll make the motion for Mr. Wascoro for the appointment through River Basin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Morning, commissioners. Bob Bowles, Scranton.
Morning, Bob.
One thing I'd like to bring up, it was great seeing the kids here today, some possibly future leaders, but the things that they did with the homeless vets, our dinner this year that we had on Christmas Day was a tremendous success. It was the largest one I've ever had, and it was unbelievable. What we do when we're done, though, anything that's left over, we see that the homeless vets receive that meal, or anything that we have left over goes into their pantry. It was great to see kids knowing what our veterans are all about, and to support them for what they've gone through with the PTSD, which is one of the things, commissioners, we had brought up in the past. I don't know where that stands at the present time, if there's been any movement on it in one way or the other.
I didn't get a chance to meet with the directors. I'll set something up in the next week or two, so I'll have an answer for you.
If you would, because every day that we wait throughout the country, it's not just Lockawana. One of our vets committed suicide, or someone else with PTSD, and I believe we're in a position to help alleviate that. So I'd like to see it on the fast track if we can. I'd like to see this county be the leader across this country of doing what we're doing for PTSD, especially with our vets. The other thing that, I was aware, I assumed that correctional care was appointed to, again, take care of the medical at the prison. Were they, they're in charge now again at the prison, correctional care?
I'll answer under the commissioners' comments on all the questions.
Okay. Yeah, because just one of my objections noted from the past about what it was all about there. The other thing would be to properly reassess the mall. Now, their restaurant closed, the movie closes, but, you know, we're seeing this guy throwing millions of dollars around, but nothing's coming into the city of Scranton. And there should be a reassessment. They had no problem reassessing the church I bought that I saved that the city was going to buy for a dollar, and put me in a position where I owe $50,000 in back taxes on it already, and I only paid 35 grand for it. Yet the mall gets a reduction rather than a fair assessment of what it should be. And that's money that needs to be assessed for the parking and everything else we're doing here. It needs to go toward the school district to start reducing our debt so we can survive here in the city, not without the county, but here in the city of Scranton. And I'd like the commissioners to really look into that. The other thing that was really disturbing, and this came up a long time ago, I was in court the other day, we had a lien put on me personally by Kolejewski and Attorney Joyce over an issue we had, and Commissioner Cummings, this is something that you had raised in the past, that you cannot put or allow the county to put liens on individuals. They went ahead and did that rather than assess it to the property, where we're in a legal battle over from a settlement that was a long time ago. A jury come back and said they didn't think there was a deal, but they never awarded any money in the deal, and we were with the court yesterday, going over, the day before, going over this. So we have a court hearing going on, but the argument is, they put a personal lien on me rather against the real estate, and that was something, I believe the commissioner said they weren't going to allow to be done. And I want to bring that out here now, what's been done with it. So I'm making you aware of it, that they did go ahead and put a personal lien on me, and that's what we're fighting in the court right now. And I do remember very adamantly, the commissioner said, "No way we're going to allow that to happen," and they went over ahead and did it anyway.
We voted, we didn't vote for that. That was never voted on.
I know. They stepped outside their bounds, and I think they got to be, that issue's got to be addressed by what they're doing.
Okay.
And we could talk, be going to close the door on this if the commissioners want to and go in further detail, but I want to make a point.
Commissioner, I would just advise you not to comment on that, because it is in litigation at this time. It is being handled through the court, and there was an order issued by the court, so that's all I can tell you at this point.
Can I get the information on that?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we're aware of it, since it's now a public record. The other thing, I was honored to have been on the panel or the forum on Trump's first year up at Keystone College, which I found very interesting, that, and I thank Keystone for doing it, because we're able to bring out a lot of good things that have happened in this country, rather than what the negatives were. And I was actually proud to represent the Trump Organization and our president at the forum. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Martina Soden. I'm head of reference services at the Scranton Public Library, 500 Vine Street. Good morning. I want to talk today about, actually, a First Friday event we will be holding on Friday, February 2nd, from 7:00 to 8:30, and this is free for the public. We are asking adults 18 and older, as it's a First Friday event. It's Frederick Douglass Interview from Slave to Master. It's a dramatic play reading by Robert Hughes, and this is a two-act play, set up as a question and answer, in which actor Bob Hughes will be reading questions about Frederick Douglass, and then reading answers using Douglass's own words from his speeches, and there will be a five-minute intermission. So as I said, this is free for anybody. Show up. It's not going to be on the First Friday venue at the Scranton Public Library. Thank you.
That's a great show, Frederick Douglass. That's February 2nd?
February 2nd, yes, from 7:00 to 8:30.
At night?
Yes. Seven, yep, First Friday.
I will try and not get my pajamas on too early that day. Frederick Douglass, that's wonderful.
Anyone else?
That'll be great.
Yeah.
He was like, oh my God, he was a great man.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road, Scranton. I'm not sure I'm in the correct venue, but this morning I had the privilege of being billed for the first time for copying a deed, and I don't know if there's a policy on making, having a privacy policy before you give out your information. All that came up was a bill or, you know, submit all this information to a company in Liverpool, New York, and there was no opportunity to read their policy statement. Is that here? Do I go to EBBY? What do I do?
These fees are set by the Recorder of Deeds. We have nothing to do with that. There's nothing to do with the commissioners. You have to talk to the, she's independently, that's correct. That was all set up through her office. We have nothing to do with that. Yeah.
Okay, I would think there'd be a county-wide policy.
You come to our meetings, now there is nothing that we?
No, because the role offices are independent. They're independently elected and they're independently run. We have no control over that. Okay, so you have to talk to the Recorder of Deeds.
Okay, thank you. And then another quick one. On all these RACP grants, how are businesses in general made aware of the opportunity to apply?
I'll have it answered when?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Marie.
Good morning, John.
Good morning. I just want to reiterate some information about the Wilkes-Barre VA and transportation available to get down there. Andy and I were talking this morning. I don't have a problem getting there, even though I don't drive anymore. I just leave the forum and walk two, three blocks to the Transit Center and hop the Luzerne County Number 17 bus at 7:40 in the morning, and 8:40 in the morning. It drops me off at the front door of the VA Medical Center. And you can get that same bus coming back in the afternoon, or if you want to get home earlier, you just take the Number 10 bus down to Wilkes-Barre and then hop it down there at the Marketplace Transit Center. But what's important is that we still have a lot of county veterans who do not take advantage of their entitlement for VA care because they don't know how to get down there. Transportation's a problem. They're elderly, they may not drive anymore. I will tell you that it's like the ninth circle of hell trying to find a parking space down there after 7:00 AM. You talk to most of the nurses and doctors and technicians, they get there very early, or they have to park way down the hill and hoof it up from the North 40. So for veterans who are entitled to these services, there are, you know, between colts, you call for them, they do have transportation for those require medical assistance. There is the Number 17 bus from Luzerne County. There are ways of getting down there, and since most of the veterans are over 65, it's no cost. But you must understand that, you know, a lot of people think, "Well, VA care is not high-quality care." It actually is. I will tell you that when they were unable to care for me in Wilkes-Barre, they put me in a van and drove me down to Manhattan twice at no cost. I don't pay anything for my meds, okay? And if you know how much medications cost, and I know Maureen would understand this, that is a major benefit as you get older and you start taking more and more medications. God forbid a veteran should be diagnosed with cancer. That alone can bust a budget, okay? So that's why I would love to see those who are entitled to such care, at least they don't turn away from it because they can't figure out how to get down there. And it is a nightmare. Those who still drive cannot find parking. Down the road, the VA has said they will build a parking garage, but right now with all the contractors down there and other people, parking is at a premium if you get there after 7:00 AM. And a lot of veterans don't want to get there at 6:30 in the morning for a 1:30 appointment. So I'm just saying, you know, please spread the word. You can't do this often enough. There are ways to get down there. You contact the Veterans Affairs Office in the Scranton Light Building, is it? Or the Electric City Building?
Electric City Building.
Yeah, 507 Linden Street on the third floor. They'll be able to provide you any information you need, but don't avoid that service simply because you don't know how to get down there. There are ways, and it's usually no cost to the veteran. Thanks.
Anyone else? George, would you like to get up and talk about the ER cap?
Sure. Next question. So the question was, how are businesses informed about RACP grants concerning RACP grants? The RACP program is issued through the Office of Budget for the state of Pennsylvania. Periodically, when the governor seems fit, he'll decide to go out and float a bond for about $100 million, and it could be anywhere between $100 and $200 million. At that time, what they'll do is they'll At that time, what they'll do is they'll do an announcement, a RACP announcement, that typically will be on the website, the state website. And then they'll send out a notice to anyone who's actually on their distribution list of RACP grants available. And usually, it's a small window. It's about a 90-day window. And everyone who's interested in that really needs to pay attention to the grants and kind of keep an eye on that. It's something where we don't go around and announce, hey, the governor's giving away money, do you want to go through us? Typically, we're approached by either the businesses themselves, or state reps or senators that the businesses approach, and say, we really want your support to advocate this grant. And then they'll apply that through us. They do a single e-file. It's a couple-page application. And then if the governor seems fit to say, this is a great project, they then notify us of funding of this award. And then we have about six months to do a full-blown plan and submit that plan. So it's really not something that is sent out to all businesses. It's more of an announcement by the governor's office.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
I look forward to our meeting after the prison today in regards to information on looking at some issues in regards to possible privatization of the prison. Is that today?
It's scheduled for 2:00 today.
Just one company?
Yeah, just today, it's Cor, David Weed from Cor Civic out of Tennessee. He's coming to meet with the warden, yourself, and myself to make a presentation.
Yeah, and that's just not, that's just a little presentation, but then hopefully we'll have something in the future for all the commissioners to-
If you feel as though what they give us is meritorious, and it's worthy of presenting before the commissioners and the prison board, that's a recommendation you're going to make to them, right?
Yeah, and there's another company, too, that we'll be meeting with as well.
There's two other ones, I believe, that were in touch with us.
I'm just going to talk about the arts and culture for a little bit, because there's been a lot of advertising out there. And I met with Maureen McWigan and Mr. Calvien at our Arts and Culture Department, and reviewed all the information again. I just want to make sure I have it all here, so people hear what I'm saying. Because I'm not changing my mind, and I would never apologize to anything I said, everything I said was accurate. That's where I'm going to start with that. I do not agree that we should be funding any of these programs. Let me just say that. I think this tax should be gone. I don't know what they were thinking implementing this tax. I think that if we were going to, we are basically one of the only counties that has this grant, along with the only, one of the only counties that has a library grant. I think there's duplication in the library tax because we pay, now, we brought that down, which is why, because everybody felt it was duplication of taxes. But we're still paying a part of that out of the Arts and Culture Department, plus they have their own individual tax that we pay. So I think that that's not fair to the Arts and Culture Department, that they have to pay into a library system that has its own designated tax already. That's one issue I have with it. But then on the Arts and Culture end, you know, we have to make a decision. Are we going to fund programs like this, or are we going to fund roads and bridges? Are we going to fund children and youth? Are we going to fund area agency on aging? These are issues that have to be dealt with, and they're going to have to come to light sooner or later on just exactly where we're going to head, in which direction we're going to head in regards to this. Are we going to raise taxes? Or are we going to shift funding? That's the bottom line. And if I have anything to say about it, I would always shift the funding rather than raise taxes. That's the way I look at things. And I represent a certain fraction of the community that agrees with me. But with all that said, I want to make sure that people understand what I had in front of me to read in regards to this funding that I voted no on, which was for the Scranton Fringe Festival. Their statement on their grant, their mission, Scranton Fringe Early Stages, a project of the Scranton Fringe Festival, provides interactive performing arts education entertainment for the youth of NEPA. Scranton Fringe is a performing arts festival which firmly believes in bold, uncensored, and exciting work in all mediums. Now, this is what I had to read. This is on their grant. It goes on and on about how they're uncensored and bold, including in their description for the children's program at the children's library. I do not believe that we should have to fund this at all. As a taxpayer, I'm offended by this. Now, other people aren't, but I am. And there are other people that are also offended by it, because I got a call from the Scranton Public Library, and they got calls from the public complaining about this kind of thing being funded. And why are they providing this in their library? So whether you take that as offensive, I'm sorry, but this group, their mission is to do this, to show bold, uncensored, and exciting work in all mediums. That's their mission. Their core mission. So I don't know what program they had at the Scranton Children's Library. I didn't go to see it. No, I did not. I got a very nice email from a Lily Mayopolsky, who, you know, asked if I understood what they did in her program there, and I said no. But I'd be happy to go and see it. And she proceeded to post that all across Facebook for everyone to see, so anybody could read it. It's an email from her and my response. I also got another email that was posted on Facebook that wasn't very nice, but then they wrote me back and apologized because they felt that they were wrong for saying what they said. I won't embarrass that gentleman, but I'm sure people can go and look that up. It's a public post. He failed to post my response to him, though. He just posted what he wrote to me in his fit of rage that he later apologized for. So that is why I am opposed to this specific group. I have their whole grant application. I went through their whole grant application, and it, the money does not just go, according to this grant, the money does not just go for the children's library. And in addition, there's some issues that I stated about the $240,000 grant. And when I sat with the director of the Arts and Culture Program, they informed me that, and I read this before, I knew that this was a fact, organizations and individual artists are subject to the following restrictions, okay? This is the guidelines. These are the restrictions. The Scranton Cultural Center, Everhart Museum, and the Lackawanna County Library System currently receive generous support from Lackawanna County, which she's referring to, the $240,000 that we provide to them through Arts and Culture. The next statement is, therefore, grant recipients like Scranton Fringe Festival may not use the Arts and Culture money to pay those organizations for space or rent. So basically, they're obligated to provide space for free. So that's a benefit to these groups. That's your taxpayer dollars paying that from the $240,000, I'm assuming, the way this is worded. These organizations may donate spaces, and in-kind service or other money may be used in rental fees. Decisions to partner with people or organizations will be decided by the institutions. So they're deciding this, and, you know, I think that there's a couple issues I have with this. We are providing a new organization to form a business. We're paying them to, for, to hold their event in a building, which I believe, I could be wrong, but I remember the last time I called on having an event there, it was $3,000 at the Scranton Cultural Center. So I don't know if that's correct. Maybe, maybe Jeff, you can, maybe you could find out. I don't know. But, you know, it's free to them. So they're getting more than just this grant. Because I saw the comment, it's only $2,400. No, it's more than $2,400. The whole weekend, it's more than $2,400 because they go through each building. Now, I don't know which ones they have which shows in, but their core mission remains the same. So that's just not going to change for me. In addition, there's grants restrictions that, you know, it goes on about how much grant expenditures, including equipment costing more than 10% of the grant request item or more, is restricted. But the one that was interesting was the activities that have a religious purpose is restricted. I've seen it all across the internet about how you can't censor, you can't censor. Well, I'm not asking to censor. I'm just saying, I'm a taxpayer, and I don't want my money spent on anyone that's promoting whatever, R-rated programming, PG-13. I don't want, we saw what happened with the Trouble with Cali. That was, the Scranton Times had that in their paper twice, but yet they're complaining because I'm complaining about R-rated programming. I don't want, that's amazing to me. It's just amazing. So I have to ask John, because can they actually say, according to our First Amendment, that we can't provide religious, can't have activities that have a religious purpose? Isn't that unconstitutional to even have that in here? I mean, I could be wrong, but-
If there's public money involved, okay, I would think that you don't want to have, you don't want to promote religion, the way I understand it, if there's public money. That's why they probably, I would think that's why they exclude the religion.
They stay away from it.
Yeah, they stay away from it. We don't want to have government promote-
But they could promote things that go against religious purposes.
Yeah, promote religion, that's correct.
So isn't that a form of censorship, then? This is where we get into this crazy stuff. And that's why I say, you know, you got to be real careful when you're going to complain about censorship, because I can come right back at you. You're going to show all this crazy stuff, you know, I don't know what they're promoting, and neither did Maureen. But then, in addition to this, I get complaints from the artists themselves stating that there's other groups that do the same thing that I wasn't aware of, because the one good thing about Scranton Fringe Festival is they were honest in their, in their application. Apparently, there's two other groups that actually have more money coming to them, and I will be bringing those out next time. I will vote against them as well, because I did not, it did not say anything in their programming that they would provide anything like this. So it's questionable. I didn't look at it yet, so I don't want to give the names out yet until I research that. But I won't vote for them either, if that's the case. So I'll look into it. But in their application, I didn't see that, anything in there, you know, putting a red flag to me, that there might be other groups doing some of this programming that's offensive to people like myself, that I wouldn't pay for on my own. And I'm really offended by the fact that our tax dollars are going to promote a new business, their employees. I mean, why? Why are we doing this? And then I hear about how it's economic development, but yet it's all taxpayer-funded anyway. So who's it, who are we promoting? I mean, we're promoting artists from out of the area, because these are from all over the country. They're not just from Scranton or Lackawanna County. They put out a call for artists to come in. So I don't even, half of these people, I wouldn't even know, I guess, I mean, that's a guess. I shouldn't say that's a guess, but we'll see. I mean, I'll go to these programs and I'll see what they're doing, because, you know, for them, I mean, I have no problem going to these shows and watching them. I just don't, I do have a major problem funding them. And like I said, I don't mean to just point out one or the other, but, you know, I have a bad enough, hard enough time voting to pass the budget with this tax in addition to having this kind of stuff being shown to our kids. And then, I'm hoping I get to everything, because I have a couple different points Then I get emails, which are showing me about what's posted on the internet. And, you know, I called Mr. O'Brien to meet with me, and he couldn't make it that day. He said he would reschedule. But he was thanking this Mackay-Lamore, and I'm going to mention their names, because they decided to post this to 56 other people or something like that. So I guess they want everybody to know what they wrote. And he, this, Connor O'Brien, to my fellow commissioners, just so you know, is saying that he's thanking this person for doing this, and everyone in our region and beyond who have spoken truth to power. Those who have spoken out on this very serious, oops, I got a call in that, this very serious matter of censorship, false information, and frankly, political power used to target a small organization for obviously unfair reasons in these initial days is greatly appreciated. John, I would like to look into what I can do about that legally, because I don't believe that, first of all, that whole thing is inaccurate. And second of all, you know, if they're going to be providing grants for us, how can we trust what they're doing when they can't even print out, when they're spreading stuff on the internet that's actually lies about a commissioner? And I don't agree that that should be allowed. I just don't. I think that there's a problem with that. I mean, they can have freedom of speech all they want, but to print the untrue opinions of theirs, they should have come in here and met with me if they wanted to, or come into the podium and talked here at the meeting. And I would have happily debated that issue with them. But I wouldn't even have known that these were out there if people that support me didn't send them to me. And then this Mackay-Lamore, I hope that they're watching this, or you put it in your paper, because they had some few choice words that I'd like to ask them about, because this is one of the people that's supposedly involved with this group and shows programming to our kids. And the one comment that was made on this Mackay-Lamore, I'm trying to find, make sure I find the correct one, where they actually state they don't, they don't believe that it's right for someone to post information like this, and the commentator called me, some type of name. They were talking about how it's just disrespectful, but yet they can call me these names that are out in Washington, like, I can't, I'm not going to say them, because Commissioner O'Malley got mad at me last time. I'm a nurse, so I really don't, I'm not, I'm unfiltered when it comes to things like that. But let's just say it was, I'm trying to be very careful how I word it, because I don't want any more of this craziness. It's going to get worse, but we'll go from there. Censorship, they're complaining about censorship, but they want to censor me because they don't want my opinion. Anything that's against what they believe in, I guess, is okay. And I would like to know if the Scranton Times, as they did to me, I mean, when I had a complaint about the Arts and Culture, they had my Facebook posts all over the place in the Scranton Times article. How about posting some of these guys that are going to mail me a bunch of, how can I put this, battery-operated sex toys? Would that be an appropriate way to state it on this dais? These are the people that supposedly are going and performing art in front of our kids. So I've got about 50 posts here that are just the same as that. These are the people that are working, that we're paying our tax dollars to, that are posting this kind of nonsense all over the internet. These are business owners in the city of Scranton that are posting. That one was specifically to Scranton. I've got multiple, multiple posts that the Scranton Times is welcome to have, that they can post on the front page of their paper to show what true bias of women actually is. Looks and clothes and all that kind of craziness. The hypocrisy is unending for the people that complain about me and want to censor me. It's amazing. And it's very apparent. I can, I mean, I've got a whole, I'll bring it up again, because there's just too much to talk about. You know, the last thing on that, and I'll probably get back to it in another part, but I would really like to thank the public. I thank you for the calls that you made to the Scranton Public Library, to show that, no, in fact, Commissioner Maureen Cummings is not alone, and this is a problem for the public. I would like the people who sent me these posts that are supporting me throughout the internet, for the time you took to send this stuff to me, so that I knew what some of these artists were saying on- artists were saying on Facebook, because I'm not apparently friends with them or whatever. I would like to thank the people that took the time out to call me and support me in the decision to not vote for this type of funding, to go to this type of programming. And I would like to thank Maureen McGuigan and Mr. Calvi for sitting down with me and showing me all the different areas that I may be against and opposed to, because they didn't have to. And I will be talking about that in the future, like I said, because there are some programs that just do not- they should not be funded by the taxpayer, in my opinion, and as the minority commissioner that serves in a different capacity and has different principles, apparently, than others, I don't think I do. I think that- I think I have the same principles as my fellow commissioners. I think that it's just a matter of, well, it's just a political matter. It's not a- it's not a principle. I'm more- I don't care about reelections. I really don't. I care about what is being happening in our county. I just- that's what I care about, and that's what I want to make sure, that I defend the principles that I stand for, and I'm not going to back down on that ever. I will not apologize for my principles. I will not apologize for what I stand for either. So I'll let that one go now, because I talked long enough. But anyway, so thank you all that helped me out on that. I would like to thank all the people that were out marching in Washington for the pro-life movement, and I would like to ask for prayers and thoughts and prayers for Donna Beloga, who was a very good friend and supporter of the pro-life movement, and one of the Republican women that was residing in Luzerne County. She was the president down there. She just lost her life to a battle of cancer, and she also lost a daughter that was 29 years old last year. Her husband is currently dealing with the loss of his daughter, his wife, and taking- helping take care of the grandchild on his own with the sons. And I just ask for anyone that has the time to send out their thoughts and prayers to her family and remember them in your prayers. I saw Joan Hoda-Walnitz's piece in the paper, and I hope I answered your questions. If not, you're certainly welcome to stay afterwards and talk with me. I would like to thank the mayor of Scranton and Scranton City Council. I understand that they had a meeting with Mr. Shrebro in regards to the flooding issues he had, and I wanted to wait until that meeting. I don't know how it ended up. I did not have the opportunity to talk to anyone, but I hope it went well. And once we- that's why I didn't want to send out that letter, Commissioner, because I wanted to make sure I didn't, you know, throw a monkey wrench into that meeting for him. And, yeah, so I appreciate that.
That matters, because that area's had flood problems for years.
Yeah, it really does matter, and I hope that it all worked out for him. I'm not sure what the end result was. And there is some issues that we're working on in the permit process, and I wanted to ask the commissioners on community relations, we're going to be picking up- is that the way that's- is there going to be a policy on that, or do we still need to meet on that, on the permit process? Andy, for- because I talked to Attorney Brazil about it, and we were supposed to get- John Foley was supposed to send us up a list on how many people and boroughs had sent their permits to the county.
I met with the-
I think we're working on it now, actually.
-the assessment director, and he's going to compile a list for us, and we tweaked some of the processes that you had requested, and we are going to have our community relation folks go out to all of the boroughs and towns as they're visiting and pick up the building permits and bring them back to the county assessor's office.
That's a great idea.
So thank you for pointing that out to us and recommending that. Everybody was very pleased with your recommendation.
Thank you, Chief Staff. Yeah, it's something that I know that I've- I agree with some of the complaints that these permits, it's- there's a problem there. It has to be rectified, and I hope that we can get that done. And, you know, last but not least, I've got article after article complaining about our president. I know that this isn't really the venue, but it kind of ties in with everything I'm talking about. You know, I guess it's okay for other people, but it's not okay for our president that has soap in his mouth and cartoon pictures and- oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't mean- I shouldn't show that one. They have soap in our president's mouth, but, you know, they had a cartoon caricature of me. Too many papers, sorry. It's amazing, the stuff they print. I have to show that picture. I just have to, because it's just ridiculous. They also had a thing on our president potty mouth, and, I mean, every day, there's something complaining about what he's saying, and yet they get mad because I'm complaining about what our Arts and Culture Department is saying. But seriously, this is- you saw that? What does that spell? Is that W-H-I-N-G-E? Is that wing, wine? What is that supposed to be?
Wing festival, I think.
This is- this is supposed to be me, okay? I mean- How many isms can I use to describe how this John Cole is offending me? How many isms are there in that picture of me? You've got ageism, sexism, misogyny. And then you have the Scranton- they're promoting this, I am assuming, "Tax money shouldn't pay for naughty art." Really? But we are, we are paying, but our president can't say anything? I mean, and you're going to say, "Oh, but that's the president." Well, this is the government. This is county government. Why are we paying for this kind of stuff? You don't want our president to act in a certain way, but it's okay for us to spend money on other people to say and act that way. That's okay. Hypocrisy, just complete hypocrisy. And the last thing, you know, it's another hypocrisy. We have the Crowds March for Women's Rights. You know, they had some really good women speakers out there talking about some real problems in the workplace that they had, that they should have focused on. But instead, I looked at the pictures, and again, I'm not going to say the words, okay? I know it was offensive. But I guess this was the nicest picture the Scranton Times could find, because it's the only bad thing is grabbing by the patriarchy, I guess. I don't know. But let me tell you, the words on the signs out there were extremely distasteful, were the words that I said in the last video. And described by this paper, "Demonstrators on Saturday denounce Trump's views with colorful signs and even saltier language." But yet they post my Facebook posts all over the place, but they don't post the facts about what these signs were. Really? Really tired of that. I'm really tired of the hypocrisy and how it's just, it's not right. But you know what? I say keep doing it, because I got more positive calls than negative. Even the emails I got, I actually got one apology for it. And I think the more this comes out to light, the more people in the public are going to see that their tax dollars are being taken advantage of in ways that they shouldn't be. And that's the way I feel about it. It might not be the way anybody else feels about it, but that's the way I feel about it. And I have an opinion. I have a right to that opinion, and you can't censor me, just like you don't want me to censor you. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioner O'Terry, any-
I have no further county business. Excuse me a minute.
Okay. I'd like to thank Bob Bowles for a great Christmas party. The dinner looked great. I saw it on the news. Also, the transportation for our veterans. I know that they're always working on- Dave Isley does a great job, Director of Veterans Affairs. I'll give him a call on top of it, but I know they're always working on transportation. They're always trying to figure out ways to make sure we get our veterans down to the VA. Correctional care was approved. What else do I have here? That's that. But this is something that's coming up, that's going to become near future. The Forever Sammy Foundation is going to be having an event Thursday, February 22, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Icebox Complex off Providence Road, free to the public. It's for anyone who has some kind of issue with a family member, if, you know, I mean, if they just want to come out and talk. There's going to be speakers, you know what I mean? We know there's issues with people that are addicted to drugs, and, you know, it's time for it to come out of the darkness, and I think it's really out front of us now. We understand it. We see what's going on. And the Heenan family is putting this on on behalf of their beautiful daughter, Sammy Heenan, who passed away. Marty and his wife have done a fabulous job on bringing this to light and making sure it's out front. Stacy is a heartfelt mom who understands what it's like to lose her daughter, and her father is pushing forward to make sure this doesn't happen to any of their households. But this is a great event. There's going to be great speakers. There's going to be free refreshments, and there'll be a lot of options there. You'll be able to talk to a lot of people that can maybe help your family member with any type of addiction or problem that they may be having, because we don't want to bury any more people in our community because of overdoses. It's very scary, and it's killing a lot of people every day. So at this time, I'd just like to adjourn the meeting. I'd like to make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Good.
Good job.
Good job.